Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Milani Malka Launani Neighborhood Board 35. Regular board meeting for Tuesday, October 21st. Call this meeting to order. And this time ask Scout BSA Troop 664 to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the presentation and the colors. Color guard attention. Color guard forward, march. Color guard mark time, march. Color guard right wheel, march. Color guard ready, halt. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Scout salute. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready to. Color guard forward, march. Color guard mark time, march. Color guard ready, halt. Color guard dismissed. Uh, you may be seated.
Hey, thank you Troop 664. Moving on to meeting decorum, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Thomas Shear.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. And on behalf of Chair Hazama and your members are both present here in front of you and virtually from your Mililani Malka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board 35. Uh, welcome and thank you for being here. Uh, we welcome all comments, feedbacks, perspectives, ideas. But what we do ask in terms of the meeting decorum, if, if you wish to speak, to kindly raise your hand, be recognized by the chair and they'll motion you up to come to the microphone. If you're joining us virtually, again, you can use the raise your hand signal. And again, the chair will recognize you, uh, and, and have you speak. And then the last is if we can ask if you could keep your thoughts and comments to about three minutes so we can get as much feedback as possible. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to our monthly reports, Honolulu Fire Department. Oh, they had to leave.
They just went out the door.
Oh, okay. Honolulu Police Department.
Oh, excuse me. I'll read off the stats and then I'll introduce you to our new acting major. The stats from nine eighteen twenty-five to ten eighteen twenty-five, we had two assaults, one robbery, one burglary, uh, four UNVs and sixteen motor vehicle collisions. Total cost per service in your guys, um, in the area is, um, four hundred and fifty calls. Relatively low. Um, the tip that I have for you guys is as Halloween nears, we, um, we ask you to keep, um, friends, family and kids safe. So Kiki should not, um, should never go out alone. If they're, um, if they're under twelve, we ask that a parent escort them or take them trick or treating. Um, stay in groups or with an adult. Set up a routine and a curfew. Uh, never go into a stranger's home. Wear light colored or reflective clothing. Use sidewalks and stay off roads. Examine treats before consumption. And if you see anything suspicious or, um, call nine one one and we'll respond and make the appropriate cases. For drivers, we ask that drivers stay alert for pedestrians who may come out of, come out from between cars, um, parked cars or behind bushes. Stop and wait for them to pass. And because it's Halloween and there will be trick or treating, we ask people to slow down. Um, and scan the road areas, um, for any pedestrians that might be caught crossing the streets. Um, we know especially, I live in the area and Mililani gets real congested. I mean, it's hard to get home. It's from the bottom part. There's a lot of people. I don't know if that's all Mililani residents, but we get a lot of people trick or treating. So we ask that people drive safe because we do notice an increase with pedestrians in the roadway. And the last thing we want is for a, a child or somebody to get, um, a pedestrian in a motor vehicle collision. And, um, without further ado, this is our new, um, acting major. Um, it's Major Kurt, um, Kurt Ng. Um, he lives in the area, so I'll let him introduce himself to you guys.
I'm Kurt. Um, recently my last assignment was at the main station. Because of a retirement, I got assigned out in Waihewa. Never worked over here in my entire life, but I have lived over here in my entire life. Thank you.
Welcome. Um, any questions for Honolulu Police Department this evening? Anyone online? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We do know where you fired the fire.
Yeah. No call. Okay, moving on, Board of Water Supply.
Good evening Chair and members. I'm Stephen Horstman with the Board of Water Supply and for the Mililani Malka Neighborhood Board District. Last month, there was one main break. It was an eight inch main break. Uh, the address was ninety-five dash ten thirty-two La Paiki Street. And our announcement is we want to remind folks about the importance of reducing water usage, especially by twenty percent. As you are probably aware, lower than normal rainfall, high water demand can impact our water supply. While we are good for now, here are some simple ways you can help ensure we have fresh drinking water now and into the future. Simple things like turning off the tap while brushing your teeth, washing hands or shaving. Shorten showers by just a few minutes. Using a garden nozzle on your hose, irrigate early in the morning. That helps to reduce evaporation. Even these small changes can make a big difference. And you can get tips on how you can conserve water and be a better water steward online at BoardOfWaterSupply.com.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Board of Water Supply this evening? Anyone online? Thank you, Stephen.
Yep, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Next up, our military rep Colonel.
Good evening Chair and Board. Uh, I'm Lieutenant Colonel Malander. I'm the, uh, representative for the US Army Garrison Hawaii this evening. Uh, for the remainder of October, the Army in Hawaii will continue training in East Range with Ranger and Jungle Tactics. Uh, small arms blank fire weekdays from six AM to six PM. Aviation training will occur through the thirty-first from six AM to six PM. And artillery, mortar and demolitions live fire training, uh, on Schofield Barracks will occur from early morning to late evening through the twenty-fourth. So just another couple of days. Uh, for JPMRC, the Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center Training Exercise, it will occur between seven and sixteen, uh, November. Uh, we'll start seeing some increased traffic, uh, in the next couple of weeks, uh, before that occurs. And then, uh, continued traffic afterwards for a couple of weeks. Uh, you can expect increased, uh, air traffic, uh, in and out of Wheeler. Uh, flights can be expected in day and night hours and will involve helicopters and fixed wing cargo aircraft. So large C seventeen's and C one thirties, much like last year. Uh, the majority of the training will, will occur in locations of Northern Oahu and some in the central island area. However, residents will see troops traveling to and from these tra- training areas. So the seventy-ninth Annual Waihewa Lions Veterans Day Parade will take place on November eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-five. The parade will begin at ten AM from the Waihewa District Park and will end at two PM at Kaala Elementary School. Please come and support the veterans who have served our great nation. And then the next, uh, job fair is on the twenty-seventh. Uh, Heliu Manu Training Room from eight thirty AM to one thirty PM. Uh, job offers and provisional hiring, the day of the job fair may occur. Applicants may go to www.himwr.com and click on the employment banner to learn of openings and how to apply online. And any questions and concerns, uh, or to be added to the distribution of this, please call the community concern line at eight oh eight seven eight seven one five two eight. And we appreciate your understanding of patients in upcoming JPMRC exercise. Thank you.
Thank you Colonel. Any questions for military this evening? Anyone online? All right. Thank you Colonel. Okay, moving on to board business. Uh, first item on the agenda, I guess update on MOU between the DOE and, uh, City and County Parks regarding the use of the Mililani Middle School parking lot. I know that, um, I got an email from Representative Chica's office saying that they believe the MOU is now with the City Parks Department. Um, I know Carrie's on, but, um, Carrie, maybe we'll, we'll, um, have that update during your time. But no one's here for that. So we defer and then move on to item B. The, oh, sorry. Somebody popped. Oh, okay.
Under, under you. I can't read them.
That's also.
Aloha Chair.
Yes.
Yes, hi, good evening. Yes, uh, so that is the update that we have as of right now, although there might be other updates and I will leave that to the city for, um, those updates.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Um, moving on to the next item on the board business, the Kamana Nui Project Update and Resolution. But understanding that the applicant has resubmitted their conditional use permit minor. They are, I guess, significant or there are some changes that they made to the first submission? And I know this board took action to develop and submit a resolution regarding their first, uh, permit issue application. So do you have any discussions or any?
Okay, Chair.
Go ahead.
Seeing that there were minor, um, changes on the new, uh, their new request, um, I believe our resolution that we previously discussed, um, still stands. Um, we may want to include, uh, cover letter, uh, with regards to addressing any changes, um, that we are still in a po- opposed to, um, their request. So I do want to make a motion, uh, to adopt Resolution two zero two five dash zero one, requesting the City and County of Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting deny revisions to the conditional use permit of Kalakaua Ranch LLC's Kamana Nui Project on the slopes of the Whatina Mountains in the Moku of Waialua, as previously read and discussed. Chair.
Okay, so moved, I have a second. Second by Alice. Second, second by Alice. Important members, we're in discussion, any further discussion on the matter? Go ahead.
Um, have we, um, invited them again additionally to come and share their project with us at all? Or are we looking to do a request of them coming to share their project?
Um, we can, we can put a request in on the letter as well.
I would recommend doing that so then we can see if they would like to engage with the community that is having opposition so we can at least get some, um, feedback of what, where they are with their project and thoughts. We have yet to be able to ask them directly. And I think if we at least invite them again, um, to our board meeting, that would give us an idea of where they stand and whether they want to engage with us. Thank you.
I can do that. I can do that. Any other discussion? Any, anyone, anyone online? Okay, seeing that we have a motion and a second, um, any objections to, um, the motion as stated? Seeing no objections, any abstention? Seeing no abstentions, the, the one abstention? Okay, so we have one abstention. Anyone, anyone else abstaining? Okay. Seeing no objections and one abstention, uh, the motion's passed. So we'll go ahead and do that. Um, oh.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, um, I read the hundred and sixty pages dated two thousand and nineteen. And I know Teresa and I and David have, have been working and Steve have been working on this. I believe that what we should probably be doing, and I don't know if it's possible, but these developers keep coming in with changes to their original CUP or whatever. I don't even know it goes back to two thousand and nineteen. My feeling, my belief is that we should, and you're going to hate me for saying this, that we should tell them to go back to the drawing board, that their COP is invalidated until they get their act together because there is ag land involved in this process. I believe so many of our developers have come in and said that they're going to plant this and plant that and plant this and plant that, and they don't do it. I think that if this developer wants to go ahead, that the CUP should say, he gets to plant all the trees in the gardens and the flowers and the plants first. And then we'll see about whether he plants it. But I know that I'm barking up the wrong tree.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to residents and community concerns. We have the, uh, Jenkins from the Mililani Lions Club.
Berta Jenkins, Mililani Lion. Uh, we'd like to invite, oh, they're not here. Oh, we'd like to invite the community and everybody to join us in our annual parade on December sixth. I think the concern for Mililani residents would be the traffic. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to my husband and he'll explain to you what we're doing to make sure the community is aware and, um, everything else.
We will be putting up digital signs to announce the parade. Uh, the several days before the parade, we'll have, uh, no parking signs. We'll have banners, banners, uh, by the police station and by the fire station in Malka, as well as by the Mahiula and Kwahilani where we always, where the banners typically are held. Um, so we'll have banners up, we'll have digital signs up. Um, in all the shopping centers, in, in Mililani Shopping Center and in Town Center, all the, all the tenants have posters posted. We are trying to get posters into Gateway and Malka. We will continue to work on that. Um, it's, it's a matter of making people aware that the parade is coming. I, I would hate to have someone wake up at, at nine o'clock in the morning, Saturday morning for the parade and, and, and they have fifteen minutes to get to the dentist and they run into our parade. We, we don't want to see that happen. We've seen it now over, over the years. We think we've got it worked out. Uh, we, we start at the high school, at the stadium, coming on the stadium at the high school. Go past Mahiula, uh, Mililani Shopping Center, down Mahiula Parkway on the far side so that the traffic does stop. The police stop the traffic and let the parade go and then they'll stop the parade and let the traffic go. So it's sort of, we're working together with the traffic and with HPD. Make sure that the traffic doesn't get crazy. Several years ago, I understand it was backed up onto H two. We don't want to see that happen ever again. So we are working on that with HPD to make sure that doesn't happen. But thank you so much for the opportunity to address the board, Mr. Hazama. We really appreciate it. We did have a, put a brochure there with, with each of the board members and there were a few left here at the table for the community. If you look at the, the yellow spot there, if you click on that yellow spot, that'll actually take you to our website that has all the, all the documents listed for the parade, the route, the, everything. The application, if your, your group would like to join us. We consider this the Mililani Holiday Ohana Parade. We've had a number of families that just, the family dresses up the truck and they come in and a parade with us as, as families. We think it's great and we would like to continue that. Thanks so much. I realize my time is on.
We've been really fortunate to be able to have the participants join the parade without charging them. All we ask is that they bring non-perishables food so that we can give it to the, give it back to the community. Yeah, thank you so much.
Hey, thank you very much. All right.
Chair, I just wanted to share with you folks, don't, don't feel bad, um, about congesting traffic. November eleventh, nothing goes through Kamehameha, Kamehameha Highway. Once it hits Kamehameha Highway, they do not stop and go, stop and go. Everybody comes out. I should know, I've been in that parade many times as I grew up in Waihewa. So Veterans Day Parade, our Christmas parades to traffic get stopped and they understand. So the tradition, as you continue it, Mililani will just have to get used to the traffic stopping. But thank you guys for coordinating. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone online? No. All right. Thank you very much. Take care. Okay, any other community concerns this evening?
I have a community concern Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I wanted to bring it up in this portion because it, it will address, um, state as well as city departments. Um, and then we, I, I will have, we will forward this, um, to whoever wants, uh, to be involved in this, not wants to, but needs to be involved in this. Launani Valley, um, the community association portion of it where the park is on Wecall Street, they did a major tree removal project on the whole slope that it sits below Mililani Malka. Um, the rim, uh, below the rim of Mililani Malka, um, going down into Waikako Loa Stream. Um, they did a great job chopping them down. They just did not remove the big giant stumps. So the whole side, and I'm sorry, everyone online can't see it. The whole side, and can you pass that down, is just littered with huge, huge stumps. And, um, it's pushed down to the edge where it's pushing the edge of the, um, embankment down into the stream. Um, it's also just killing all the, all the plants under it. Therefore, there's no root system to hold the, 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 the side of the mountain, the slope of the mountain up. Um, there is some confusion that I had going back and forth with DPP because the section that was top down was done by the community association. However, DPP shows that the community association is not listed as the, the current, uh, taxpayer, property owner, Waikuna Joint Venture, which was the original. Um, so I'm going to pass down the tax map, uh, the, the map itself so you can kind of see where, um, everything was done. So the trees were done right below the Castle and Cook line where Waikuna Joint Venture, um, is at a butts actual park of Launani Valley. The stream is in between, uh, the, the park and Waikuna, the, the area that Waikuna Joint Venture is shown as owners. Um, so my biggest concern is that the collapse of the side coming down the slope can inch into Castle and Cook's area if all that vegetation dies. Um, and again, it, it's falling into the stream and there's, there's large, uh, large, uh, limbs and they weren't like twigs, they're huge limbs that are hang- hanging over the stream itself. Um, so at any time when we should have a flood and boulders were knocked into, uh, tree, uh, down trees in the stream already, um, there was a concern. So I'm not quite sure who's responsible for the stream. I've got to do the run around and that. Um, and then while I was doing this photo montage, I did find where there's discharge pipes coming from underneath Launani Valley Community Association Park. Um, PVC as well as just the typical plastic hoses that are going over to the side into the stream. And also this white goop, um, on all these sprayed on the plants. And then they're dumping their, um, their clippings, their yard clippings and things onto the, 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 the side of the embankment, um, which maybe it's our property, but we, and we can dump our, our own trash on our property, but that's right along the stream. So I'm hoping that there might be, uh, city official or state official who might be able to help, um, me get this taken care of because the association, they literally said that they're leaving it there because the, the vendor said it's just going to disintegrate into the, the, the earth. So, thank you Chair.
Hey, thank you. Any, um, questions? Um, Mel, you're, you're on.
Just as an FYI, I did contact DLNR. I contacted, um,
What did DLNR say?
It's not our problem. It's that call this place, I call that place. Oh, we don't really handle that. Um, I don't think that's ours. I'm like, well, who owns the stream? I even called the Water Protection Bureau. I forget what they're called. I talked to like a dozen people, um, and they all pointed back to each other. So, you know, and I'm fairly educated. I've been in this realm many times over in different communities. I'm not naive, but for some reason I can't, I can't figure this out. And it's been almost two months. They started that project in the summer. So, and I've called from that point in time when they didn't come back and remove that. Unfortunately, we have new property managing agent. They also hired a site manager who argued with a city investigator who came out and issued us an NOV because they were chaining all of our signs to city street signs and city trees. And he argued and said he could do that with the city investigator. So that's kind of what we're dealing with when it comes to our site people. But I don't want to be responsible for this as a homeowner if something should happen and the side of that hill collapses because we already have an issue with the backside that we almost had to pay ten thousand dollars each for the back of that valley. But I cannot live in, in, in good conscience, knowing that this can, can fall into the stream. I grew up on that stream from nineteen seventy-five when I was born. I lived along that stream on the other side. And so this, this I know impacts everyone downstream, even the farmers at the end, at the Waikela Stream where it goes into all of that. This is, this is not acceptable. And I am, because I pay dues, I am responsible for this. So I am bringing, I'm telling it on ourselves to hopefully, hopefully mitigate any issues state or city. But state or city, somebody has to go there and say, this is not allowed. I just need to figure out who it is. Thank you.
Mel, you still on?
Are you asking if Melanie Martin is still on?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so just email me the, the concern and then I will forward it to the governor's office.
Okay. Yeah, I think DLNR needs to get down there and see who owns that stream. So, okay. Thank you Mel. Any other residents concerned this evening? Nope. If not, we'll move on to our elected officials report. Oh, I'm sorry. You guys want to come up? Yep.
Hello, good evening. I am firefighter Lorenzo from the Mililani Malka Fire Station Second Platoon. Our statistics for the month of September include fires, structure one, wildland brush one, cooking one, activated alarms four. For our emergencies, we have thirty-three medicals and two motor vehicle crash collisions. This month's safety tip includes seasonal decorations from the Honolulu Fire Department. With the holiday season just around the corner, consider fire resistant, non-combustible decorations. Choose only underwriters lab approved electrical decorations and follow your instructions correctly. Uh, we ask that you guys use lights that are in good repair. Always turn off lights before leaving your home or going to bed. Do not overload power strips or piggyback them and never leave candles unattended. Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you. Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Anyone online? All right. Thank you for coming back.
You guys have a good night.
Okay, moving on to elected officials report, Office of Governor Josh Green, Melanie Martin. Mel?
Hi, good evening Chair Hazama and members of the Neighborhood Board. I'm Melanie Martin. I'm representing the governor's office. So the governor's newsletter for October twenty twenty-five of interest would be that Hawaii became one of twelve states to, um, participate in the Affordable Clean Cars Coalition. And really it's an initiative to promote EV adoption, uh, clean air as well as, uh, federal tax credit awareness. I know many of you know about the HOV lane and that you, if you have an electric vehicle, you can no longer go into the zipper lane. Okay, so like I learned today at the cabinet meeting that it really wasn't President Trump, but it was really Congress and it had to do with passage of a bill. So anyway, that's why. And okay, so moving on. I wanted to bring I wanted to bring something to your attention and Dean, Chair Hazama already is aware of this, but DCCA, Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs reported that there's this cryptocurrency machine scam that's going on and it's nationwide, but it hit home locally. So there's this scam where the sheriffs will call a victim, well, they'll say that you owe this debt and then they will direct you or instruct you to go to a cryptocurrency ATM machine. And they will tell you to with, to deposit money to pay back this debt. And I want everyone to know that it's a scam and that I think, were you there today, Chair Hazama? At the cabinet meeting, the director of DCCA said that someone from the state Consumer Protection Office was actually in a little convenience store right across the street from their office. And there was this gentleman that was actually trying to deposit money into the machine. The good thing that the person from Consumer Protection was there because they stopped that person from actually depositing money because they knew it was a scam. So just be aware that there are these scammers out there that will take advantage of people unknowingly. They're, they're posing as law enforcement. The other thing I wanted to report that I heard today in the cabinet meeting is that the State Department of Education, they are offering those individuals that are affected by the federal shutdown. They're offering for their children in schools free and reduced lunch. So if you're affected by the federal shutdown or you know someone, please ask them to call their school so that they can take advantage of that free or reduced lunch. Other things that I wanted to report was that, okay, so I know the military, they announced that they have a job fair. So I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity to let you know that the state will have, will have booths at the Career Expo, which is going to be at the Neil Blaisdell Exhibition Hall on October 29th from 9 to 2. And the state, okay, so shameless plug, Chair Hazama, the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation will be there from 9 to 2. So please, if you're looking for a career opportunity with the state, please come down to the Neil Blaisdell Exhibition Hall. Also, there is a more locally, more closer to Mililani Career Fair on November 14th in Wahua at that value added location from 10 to 2. And we'll have the State Department of Human Resources Development and other state departments there to, to share information about career opportunities. And we talked about Halloween and I wanted to let you know that as a 23-year resident of Mililani Maoka, if you're new to Mililani Maoka, get ready because Halloween is on a Friday night. Any other weeknight, you'll have over 100 children come visit or trick or treaters come visit. So it's on a Friday night. It's good, there are going to be probably 200, 200 trick or treaters. And the traffic starts really early. So if you work in town or you need to get home, you need to get home early because if not, it'll take a long time to get to Mililani Maoka. And that's all I have to report. Any questions? Let me know. Thank you, Chair Hazama.
Any questions for the governor's office this evening? So Mel, Mel, a couple of things. Give them your home address so everybody can come to your house on Halloween. But for the HOV lane thing, I did get a letter from Congressman Case. Apparently is a bill to, it's called the HOV Lane Exemption Reauthorization Act that will extend the EVs to use HOV lanes through 2031. So that is currently in the House Transportation Committee. So as soon as they decide to come back to work, maybe they'll pass that bill. And then they'll reauthorize the, at least the EV lane things.
Well, that's awesome. That's good to know. Thank you for that.
Yep. Um, any other questions? Anyone online? Alright, thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Congressman Case, is anybody on from his office this evening? Nope. Okay, moving on to Office of Mayor Blangyardi, Carrie? You're on, Carrie? There you are. Oh.
Hi Chair.
Yep, okay, good.
Good evening Chair Hazama, board members and community members of Mililani Maoka and Launani Valley. Carrie Castle, I'm the Deputy Director with Budget and Fiscal Services, representing Mayor Blangyardi this evening. Couple of, I, I will put the link to Mayor's latest newsletter, but a couple of highlights that are included in this issue. Everybody I'm sure knows about the second segment of Skyline that just launched on the 16th. And for the four day period from October 16th to 19th, there are, there, there were 61,000 riders in that four day period. Now, two of those days were free. So, you know, I'm sure that's, everyone took advantage to the extent that they could. But we, we're just hoping to keep up the momentum. Two important employment stops in this second segment. One is Pearl Harbor and the second is the airport. Also wanted to point out in this newsletter, the charter, the city charter, which is the Honolulu's constitution, is reviewed every 10 years. And so this year, this, there's an opportunity for the public to submit any proposals for amendments, language changes, what have you, that will show up in the 2026 general election ballot for voters to then decide. So again, this information will be included in the newsletter. Moving on to the community concerns from last month. With respect to the Mililani Maoka Emergency Access Road, you know, we do not have a present, we do not have someone there to present at this time. But I do have information that I believe will be very helpful. So as was shared in the past, when the, when the emergency happens, the Department of Emergency Management will take lead in, with respect to making sure our public safety department, so Honolulu Police Department, Fire, again, and emergency management will be in charge. They will open up the road and be directing residents to where they should be exiting. I can put in the chat, I have some information with respect to residents. If you're living north or west of Meheula Parkway, there's instructions as to kind of what your route will be. And then also in terms of residents living south or east of the Parkway and what your route will be. So that I will put in the chat. It's too much to go through in terms of, you know, all the streets to, to exit. So with respect to the signage, we don't, although we put in a request to have the signage and painting taken care of, I don't have a timeframe for you as far as a specific time date, date and time rather, in which that installation will happen unfortunately. Any questions on this item?
Any questions? No. No, go ahead.
Okay, moving on to item number two regarding Skyline and the overnight parking. So, you know, the, the intention of the parking at the various stops is, is not intended to be like, you know, parking at the airport where you leave your car there for, you know, a few days. It's, it's really intended to be like travel to and from work. We do understand that on occasion, if someone works sort of off hours, that I, I guess this is where the situation could be that overnight parking is required. Department of Transportation, you know, given that this is brand new, Department of Transportation is going to receive continuous feedback on parking. What I heard was that with this, you know, with the free weekend, the parking is really sort of at its limits. So DTS recognizes that they will have to look at, you know, I guess, solutions to see what they can do in terms of more parking. So that, that's, that's the response for now. Any questions on that item?
No.
Yes?
No, no, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Item number three. So this is the, sorry, this is the uprooting, right, on Meheula Parkway. So in this case, DFM, sorry, Department of Facilities Maintenance, they are going to address the tree root uplifts on, on Meheula Parkway as the interim in-house repair project. Typically, the other rooting is being taken care of by Department of Design and Construction. But given the significance of this much traveled Parkway, Department of Facilities Maintenance is going to address it. So there are currently a number of other, however, other in-house projects that the Division of Road Maintenance must take care of. So it is on the schedule. It looks like there's a tentative completion date of June 30th, 2026. Okay, and lastly, the, our MOU between the city's Department of Parks and Recreation and Department of Education. I think we are finally there at the finish line. So our Department of Parks and Recreation has reviewed it. They have sent it to our core council, our deputy core council that services Department of Parks and Rec. They accelerated the review of that. There are no concerns at this time, so they will be signing the MOU and sending it back to DOE. If you're interested, I have like a five steps of how this will work, the process will work. But I can also just put it in the chat.
Yeah, once you go put in a chat and we can pass it out to the board members.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for that report. Yep. That was a lot of items to report on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks Chair.
Any questions? Questions for the mayor's office? Yes, Steven?
Yes, I have a question. Carrie?
Hello.
Hi, Steven Melendez here. I have a question for you. I've had some complaints from constituents, city employees concerning the COVID hazard pay. I understand the, the county employees have not been, maybe provide clarification for me. Have they been, have they received their COVID hazard pay yet?
So for the HGEA members, the answer is no. So they, in order of payments that were made for the hazard pay, it was SHOPO first and then OTS. And then right now they're working on HGEA.
Thank you. Do you know when they would receive their payment?
I know that the department that's responsible, our payroll department, is trying to make sure that as much as possible before the holidays. But yeah, barring any, you know, I guess extenuating circumstances. I know that that's what they're targeting. Part of it is what happens is in the review process, if certain things come to light where there's discrepancies that, that could happen and that would cause a delay. We obviously want to make sure that, you know, having the members wait this long, that by the time it actually is finally issued, we want to make sure it's, it's accurate.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So the, the funding is currently in the treasury for the city then?
Yes, yes. The funds are available.
Okay, great. Yeah, if you could touch base with them and just verify, it'd be great if they're able to get it before the holidays.
Understood. I'm, I, I know how, how important that would be.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for the mayor's rep this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Council District Eight, Council Member Okimoto's office, Jamie.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Neighborhood Board. I was gonna say committee, I'm sorry. Been a long day. Jamie Shadell, Office of Council Member Val Akino Okimoto. Just some highlights over the past week. Mayor Blangyardi, huge mahalo to him for signing Bill 62, 2024 and as Ordinance 25-45. This bill provides an exemption from the county motor vehicle registration fee for one vehicle for veterans 65 years of age or older who are not dishonorably discharged from the US Armed Forces. Mayor also signed Bill 34, 2024 into law as Ordinance 25-44. This increases the residential A tiers and also adds an additional tier. That should help some of our Maoka residents, especially with the increased home exemption that put them back into that residential, regular residential level. The actual tax rates will be proposed, not in this next budget, next budget cycle? Not this upcoming one, but the following one because majority of these tax breaks take effect on July 1st, 2027. Carrie also highlighted the SHOPO pay raises or the hazard pay, but SHOPO is also getting a, a pay raise, a retro pay raise at about $18 million for this fiscal year. There's sufficient funding in the budget for them. That goes to full council next month. Next full council meeting is November 5th, 2025. We've talked about Halloween tonight, but since our next board meeting won't be until late November, want to wish everybody a happy Veterans Day. If you need additional information, please give us a call at 768-5008 or visit us at honolulusidicouncil.org. Pending any questions, I'm going to stand on our written report.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Council Member Okimoto's offices this evening? Anyone online? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council District Two, Council Member Matt Wires office, I think Kelly's on. Oh, there you go.
Aloha Chair, members of the board. Kelly and I are from Council Member Matt Wires office. You guys are doing well. I think Mayor's rep kind of highlighted some of the stuff, so I'll just maybe skip over some of the stuff that she talked about already. Just wanted to mention a couple of bills and resolutions that Council Member recently introduced. This would be Bill 56 and Resolution 25-228. This would provide the community a stronger voice in the land use process. Oftentimes residents feel left out of decisions that directly impact their community. This bill and resolution would require applicants for minor special management area permits or SMAs as well as minor conditional use permits or CUP to present to the Neighborhood Board. The goal of these measures is to increase community engagement early on and to hopefully reduce and prevent future land use violations, minimize appeals before the zoning board and any conflict. Both of the bill and resolution are still pending in the zoning committee. Council Member also recently introduced Resolution 25-268. This urges- Um, this urges the Department of Planning and Permitting to create a database of all discretionary permit applications including minor conditional use permits and minor special management area permits. Um, while DPP already posts larger permit applications for public reviews, some minor permits um are not included online, and even though they're minor, um, they can still have a significant impact on the community. Um, this resolution was referred to the zoning and planning committee, but has not been scheduled for a hearing yet, so we'll definitely keep you guys posted. Uh, let's see. And then um Councilmember also wanted to um highlight that he was proud to um honor and recognize the Domestic Violence Action Center, or DVAC, at our full council meeting earlier this month. Um, as you may know, DVAC um works to help break the cycles of violence, promote healthy relationships um for our local families. Um, as the first, uh, as a former domestic violence prosecutor, Councilmember has seen firsthand how DVAC has changed lives, and he just wanted to recognize and thank them for all their work and contributions to the community. Um, and then I think Director also already answered Board Member Melendez's uh question regarding the hazard pay, but yeah, um, you know, the city says, well, their response is they are working with the different unions on a fair and equitable resolution um as um agreements are reached. That's when the payments are going to be processed. So uh, like she mentioned, yeah, I believe HGA is the last one. Other than that, um, that's my report. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them out.
Hey, thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Councilmember Wires?
Yep.
Kelly, Steve Melendez here. I want to appreciate all you've done through Matt Wires' office concerning assisting our constituents concerning the uh hazard payout. And as Carrie had mentioned, that unfortunately, HGA is at the end of the line in getting their payout. So hopefully they'll get it by uh before Christmas. Thank you for all your assistance.
No problem. Yeah, I've, I've been getting calls too, so I hear you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Councilmember Wires' this office? Yeah, go ahead, Teresa.
Hey, Kelly, this is Teresa.
Hi.
Um, it, I don't, it's not really a question. I think I just want to put it out there, um, because you had mentioned DPP, um, not you know, they come out to the community, they have their meetings, you know, to anybody has a request for amendments of, you know, their original uh requests. Um, my only concern, and this has been brought up at the meetings before and I've been there, is they have these meetings at ten o'clock in the morning because according to them, none of them work after hours. And I think it's really, really dis- I don't want to say dishonest, but I feel like you're not gonna get community feedback if everybody's at work. Um, I work from home, so I can be at these meetings, but it gets tiresome when it's just my voice, yeah, my name on the paper. Um, and I think it would behoove that department to make themselves, selves available to come in the evening at least once in a quarter somewhere. Um, where the community, especially a project that's kind of a hot topic, hot um issue, that they come out to the community to get actual information and feedback from the community and that the community can feel that they're actually being heard by that department. Um, you know, the mayor comes out and has evening, you know, meetings. Um, it would just be nice to, to put that out there that, um, I don't know, we need to change the city charter. I, I don't know. Um, but if there's any feedback you would provide, how could we could try to encourage that? That would be helpful too. Thanks, Kelly, for your work.
No problem. I'll see what I can do uh for future meetings, but um, yeah, maybe you gotta change the city charter, so make sure you sign up tomorrow. By November seventh.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone online? All right, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, Senate District Seventeen, Senator Dela Cruz's office. If you get unmute. Uh, no, no, I think you're still muted. Is, is it us or is it him? Charles, can you unmute yourself or? Okay, let's, let's go on and then if he gets unmuted, we'll come back to him. Uh, want to House District Thirty-eight, Representative Matsumoto.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Members of the Public. Great to be with you all today. So it has been a fun-filled pact. Uh, last month, uh, we did about six Capitol tours. So we had Mililani Uka Elementary come, and we gave all the students tours there. We also had our fall break Capitol talking tour where the public was able to come out, and that was a, a wonderful time. I just want to thank again the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor's Office for opening up their office for us every single time we did that tour. Um, was able to participate in a lot of events here in Mililani. Uh, you can see that on your second page and third page. Uh, but the thing I kind of really wanted to focus on, and I think will be mentioned if it hasn't been mentioned already, but wanting to give a warm heartfelt congratulations to Milani Middle School Agricultural Teacher Christopher Justo on being named the Lelehuua Mililani Waialua Complex Area Teacher of the Year by the Hawaii Department of Education. Uh, this was a really special one for me. He was my seventh grade teacher, and I was able to have him the first class he ever taught in his career, very first period, um, and was able to write his letter of recommendation for him to be chosen. Uh, so this one was very, very special uh for me, and there will be many events honoring him, but very happy that he was able to, to win, win that award. Um, again, many different things, but wanted to highlight, I've done a lot of jump rope in this last month for a lot of the elementary schools, but I spent the last two days jump roping for every PE class at Mililani High School. Um, so I helped to teach them all to jump rope. So I did four hours of jump rope today and four hours yesterday. Um, but it was great to be able to talk with the students there. And of course, homecoming, got to participate in the lip sync as a judge, judge their banner competition. Um, and again, participated in the parade with my children as Lilo and Stitch. Um, and we had our parade float. Wanted to also, the upcoming events, of course, the trunk or treat at Milani YMCA will be there as well. And we have several events on the back, but a reminder again, we're still have our pre-session survey. So if you haven't turned that in yet, please turn it in. And if you haven't gotten it yet, we are doing the slow rollout because at the legislature, we get two hundred and fifty dollars of postage a month. So we've been mailing it out, you know, August, September, October, November. So if you hadn't gotten it yet and you live in our district, it's coming, or you can just go straight to repmatsumoto.com, click on, fill out the survey, and you can do it before you get it in the mail. So with that, that is my uh presentation for this month.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Representative Matsumoto this evening? Anyone online? Yep, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Charles still muted.
Uh, can you hear me now, Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Charles.
Perfect, perfect. I apologize about the uh chair and board. I, uh, it's drawing on my phone now. Um, just a quick report, um, just uh SB nine-three-three, the assigning the law as Act three-ten, which appropriates an additional fifty million to the nonprofit sector. Um, it author, it authorizes the Office of Community Services to contract the services of Aloha United Way to assist with administration and grant awards. And the application process is um now open, and it closes on Friday, October twenty-fourth at four-thirty PM. And the hearing notice we posted shortly. And uh, that's all I have. Uh, thank you, Board and Chair.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Any questions for Senator Dela Cruz's office this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Moving on to House District Forty-six, Representative Peruso, Amy.
Aloha. Hi. Uh, good evening, Chair and Board, um, Members. I um have a, a bit to share, so I'll try to um be as concise as possible. Uh, we've been spending the interim preparing for session, as I've mentioned before, and um, while I'm not certain that we'll be going into special session, um, we are facing a fairly dire fiscal situation. So in the last financial plan that I've seen, um, are um, we're in the red in at least four of the next six out years. So um, that's the situation we're gonna be trying to address uh this coming session, and um, we've been really focusing on how to enable our multimillionaires and billionaires to um pay their fair share, and I think it's really critical because it looks like the, the not only are we seeing the federal shutdown, but we're also seeing that the cuts to SNAP will um uh come into effect this year, which was not something we had anticipated. That it was, this is kind of new information, so we're gonna have to address that. Luckily, we, we might be able to um do that without going in a special session, but we are facing a lot of fiscal challenges. Um, and that's kind of what's happening on, on the Finance Committee. Um, on the Energy and Environment uh Committee, Environmental Protection Committee, we're working on legislation to approve um energy affordability. Um, and, you know, as you know, I've been working on extended producer responsibility, but more specifically, we're talking about revamping our bottle bill. Um, and really uh improving recycling um for residents so that we can stop relying so heavily on landfills. Um, we'll be looking at some um strengthening of ag land use uh law this coming session, especially given what we've seen, um, you know, out on the other side of my district. And I appreciate the board's support in that issue. Um, that landowner, um, Kalaknua Ranch LLC has submitted a revision to his CUP, and um there is an opportunity to provide comments on the revision, and actually, the revisions are, are worse. They make it much more of a tourism project in my mind. Um, and ag is, i- it's not an accessory to ag. It is like the, the real picture. Um, so I encourage folks to submit comments to DPP about that project, and you can find information to that about, uh, on the Kupa'a Kaala um website and Instagram page. Um, also continuing to work on civic education measures, which I know is important to this community. Um, and I do hope to see more Mililani schools become schools of democracy. Uh, and to that end, we're also continuing to encourage uh Mililani students to apply for the um high school legislative internship. So it's the, it was the first um state legislative internship in the country and um continues to be a really powerful experience for students. And then we're also offering a summer internship next summer. This was our first summer, working with about four, five students, and really powerful. Um, and then I guess, yeah, that, that's all I have, and I'm available for questions.
Hey, thank you, Amy. Any questions for Representative Peruso? Any questions? Anyone online? All right, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, House District Thirty-seven, Representative LaChica. Go ahead.
Aloha, Chair Hazama, Members of the Board and Community. Tosa Lobendón here on behalf of Representative LaChica. She is unable to make it tonight. She is in San Jose for the annual NCSL Jobs slash Workforce Conference. However, she sends her warmest aloha for tonight's meeting. I have dropped in the chat the October twenty-twenty-five newsletter link, the twenty-twenty-six pre-legislative survey, the Filipino-American History Month event website, and the email for anyone interested in applying for the House uh twenty-twenty-six legislative session. In the chat, I'm almost also shamelessly plugging, so uh, thank you, Mel, for that. Uh, please, if you're interested and you find that legislation is, is your thing, apply. Uh, we are taking applications now. Um, so in the past, um, uh, well, we're gonna talk about a few things, but uh, we just wanted to touch upon a few points from our newsletter. Um, this Saturday, we joined the Mililani Homecoming Parade, uh, along with Representative LaChica. I was also there with my family. Uh, and we dressed up as Dogman uh for pretty fun. Uh, Rep also attended the Mililani Homecoming Varsity Game. Good job on the win, go Trojans. On the seventeenth, we did a site tour of Knoilani Elementary School to see construction of the new renovations for the kitchen and cafeteria. Super excited. They're expanding, and they're gonna get whole new equipment for their students uh to make food, which is exciting. And if you're a food lover like me, you know how important that is. Um, in the beginning of the month, Representative visited Boulder, Colorado, to do a site visit of a school that has a nationally recognized culinary center and regional food system. This district model connects local farming to school cafeterias, offering fresh, scratch-cooked meals. These insights will help advance the Nourishing Hawaii's Future Initiative to build regional kitchens that strengthen food security, create jobs, and provide healthy, locally grown meals for our keiki. Also, sign note, the regional kitchen will be built in Mililani. So uh, that is pretty exciting, uh, and that is future to come, not anytime soon, but um, in the future. Um, on the sixteenth, we then promoted Nourishing Hawaii's Future by attending a taste testing of the new initiative with the Department of Education to create better school lunches. Uh, and Mililani High School students actually provided their input through surveys, helping develop fifty new lunch items that will be slowly rolled out and implemented throughout the state of Hawaii. On October first, we let our community agrivoltate the energy, we're selling solar. We think over the twenty participants who attended, we look forward to future events, and please stay tuned to and then on October seventh, Representative appeared on PBS Hawaii Insights. Actually, I highly encourage it. There's a lot of good conversation to be had. Um, and then wrapping up our events for the month, as I've been mentioning over and over again, it is Filipino-American History Month. There have been numerous events that have been happening, uh, multiple buildings throughout the month of October, Capital Modern, Hawaii Convention Center, Honolulu Halle and Blaze Dell Center are all celebrating. They're lighting their buildings, the colors of the Filipino flag, white, blue, yellow, and red. Uh, they also just did the flag raising ceremony for Filipino-American History Month, along with the Philippine consulate Chair Taub Taubao and City and County of Honolulu. And our last event is this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, from four to eight PM at Capital Modern, which is the festival finale featuring local artists, shops, food, and a special free concert from Grammy Award-winning uh Grammy Award nominee and twenty-twenty-five Tiny Desk Award winner Ruby Ibarra. Please visit philipirouted.com to claim your free tickets and get more information. Lastly, I promise, if you haven't yet, please legislative survey as Rep Matsumoto shared district to make sure that everyone's voices are heard and so, and then we will share our take them back.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Representative LaChica's office this evening? Oh, anyone online? All right, thank you. Thank you, Tosa. Okay, next up is uh Department of Transportation, Casey.
Uh, good evening, Chair Hazama, Members of the Mililani Malka, Alonani Valley Neighborhood Board. Uh, Casey Abbe from the State DOT Highways. Last month, me and I mentioned about the graffiti along the H-two freeway in Northbound going towards Wahewa. I must apologize, but I was told the wall and the fence belongs to the Mililani Malka Residential Community and not the state highways, therefore, uh, we cannot paint over the graffiti. So if the Neighborhood Board wants the graffiti to be covered up, the board must have the community to paint over the graffiti. Uh, also for the wire park and ride facility signed on the perimeter fencing, I must apologize also because the city owns the facility. So the city is responsible to replace the sign on the fence. The state highways are responsible for the directional signs to the facility. Working with our maintenance crew, we repaired the damaged concrete wall on the bar duct before they were lying Alonani Valley off-ramp, and during my few inspection, I noticed some graffiti on the Lelehuua Golf Course Road overpass. So I'll work with our maintenance crew on painting over the new graffiti. I also noticed graffiti on the light poles and a damaged utility box on the H-two Southbound on-ramp coming from the Lelehuua Golf Course Road, also an old signpost foundation. Also, an old sign pole's foundation sticking out of the ground on the right shoulder of the Mililani Parkway as you approach A to H-two southbound on-ramp coming from the Mililani Town area. I'll work with our maintenance crew on addressing these concerns. The new speed humps have been installed at the three ramps, as mentioned at last month's meeting. The slide shows the new speed hump on the H-two southbound off-ramp and the H-two northbound off-ramp. Unfortunately, the new rectangular rapid flashing beacons was not installed during my few inspection on October seventeenth. But during my quick follow-up inspection after lunch today, the contractor was working on it. It should be complete by this Friday, weather permitting. And this slide shows a speed hump on the H-two southbound on-ramp with the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Again, I want to thank Representative Lachica, Representative Matsumoto, and Councilmember Okimono for their assistance with following up with our administration and advocating for the Mililani residents to have the state highways address the neighborhood board's concern on speeding on the on and off ramps. And finally, in October, in October fifteenth, sub-advertiser in the Kukui Line by Christine Donnie. And today's start advertiser under the Big Q or Question Survey on Page A Two. The warning period for our red light traffic cameras that can also catch motors speeding through the intersection will end on October thirty-first. Starting from November first, official citation will be, with fines, will be mailed out to violators who speed through the intersection. Citations will be issued to motors speeding more than eleven miles per hour over the posted speed limit. And the cost per citation range from $167 to $317. The red light citations will cost $92. And yes, motors can receive both a red light running citation and a speeding citation for the same incident. So when the traffic light turns yellow, motor should slow down and be prepared to stop when the light turns red instead of accelerating to get through the intersection and risk you seeing a citation or two in the mail. Moving forward, the state highways is working our elected officials to request for additional funding to install additional red light and speeding cameras on state highways. Internally, the division is working on the process to give up a prioritized list for future locations. As for city roads, the neighborhood boards and the public should contact their city officials to have them fund and install this new technology if they have a concern or green light running or speeding on city streets. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for Department of Transportation? Teresa, go ahead.
So I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So the red light cameras also have speed cameras. Now, does that speed camera only engage when the red light camera is engaged? Or that is on all the time and you could just get a speeding ticket regardless if it's a red light or a green light?
The speed camera, once you come into the range of the speed cameras and you're speeding over the, more than eleven miles per hour, it'll tag you. So once you're in that range, so as you approach the intersection and you're speeding already eleven miles per hour, you know, and it's within the camera vision, it'll catch you.
Okay, so it's always engaged. It's not just when the red light camera goes, is engaged. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for DOT? Yeah, call up.
Anna Hudson, I just wanted to ask about the recent speed bump you put on the on-ramp, the off-ramp of Mililani Malka. When they first put it in, it was just a big black bump and I think we were all surprised. Then they put stripes on it and I think they put a, a speed bump sign on the right. There's not one on the left. And so it's kind of a surprise. I never heard you say that you were gonna, I know we talked about the off-ramp going Wahihua to Mililani, but I was really, we were surprised. I've never seen a speed bump, you know, exiting, exiting a freeway. I just wanted to ask about that. Is that a normal occurrence? It's a big one, too. Like, if you're going really fast, you, I think Teresa even said, don't put a speed bump on the other side, but I didn't know you were going to put one on the Malka side.
Yeah, again, previous neighborhood meetings, we did clarify where, which on-ramps and off-ramps that we were going to put these speed bumps on. And we've been working closely with the neighborhood board on it and with assistance of the elected officials. So.
Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Teresa.
Um, so I just wanted to follow up on that. Part of the issue is the sign to warn folks is so close to the hump, you can't really, it, 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 it seems, it seems vindictive that those humps were put in regardless, without really realizing, because, you know, you don't drive on it every day, so it doesn't really bother anyone who doesn't use it. But for new people who are learning about that, right? And you have to teach that, obviously, because there's people that fly off there. And there's people that go mosey on down. But it should be well aware when you're coming off the ramp, not when you turn the corner and there's a sign. It's kind of too late because, you know, if you're going thirty miles an hour and there's no rating on. And honestly, the one that's at the Mililani, from Wahihua to Mililani, that exit, it's perfectly fine. I drove real, it's, it's not. I appreciate that you folks looked into other options of height and use and the, and the length of it. I haven't gone on the other side to enter the freeway. But you know, when, back in Drivers Ed, we were always told, once you get that ramp, you start to, you need to accelerate because you're merging. You know, it's like you're stopping and then you go again. You stop and you go. That one seems a little odd. But I do appreciate the flashing lights for the cross, because that is what you notice. That is excellent. That's exactly what we needed. We'll see whether or not the humps, you know, and, and it comes down to where I've heard the conversations in the community. Well, basically, if you're going too fast and you break your car, that's your fault. And I think, like I said, it felt very vindictive to put that in and not have the strip being done at the same time and not have the signage properly done. Yeah, you need to add another sign, at least to the left-hand side of the exit. So, because I'm a left-hand looker to begin with, because when I'm coming off, I'm, I'm focused because I'm on the left side of my car. So once you get around that bend around the tree, then you come to the sign. I was aware that it was coming in, so I already was looking for it. But you have people who are new to the community or what have you, and that sign is just way too far past in order to properly address that, regardless if you're going twenty-five miles or not. It's, the signage should still be visible, easily visible, once you're exiting the ramp. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I, I think DOT has a, had a challenge. So those bumps and safety mitigation measures were not put in for the cars. They're put in because pedestrian, there are pedestrian crosswalks across those areas. And that was a complaint, was that the, the cars weren't stopping, you know, it's an on and off ramp thing for the, so it's basically for pedestrian safety. But it is a challenge, obviously, you know, you're putting crosswalks on, on and off ramps to the freeway is, is kind of hard. But there's really no other way for the pedestrians to go over unless you build a, an overhead bridge, which is going to be too much.
I, I did want to ask something, Chair. Is there data that they have that shows that there's high frequency of pedestrian accidents that they did?
I think that's why the area of representatives and politicians got involved, because they're getting, they're getting calls about, I guess, pedestrian complaints and stuff like that. Yeah. And it is hard, especially, like I said, you know, we don't have a, there's no way for the residents to go back and forth without using those crosswalks, you know, across the freeway without building an overpass walkway, which is going to cost, I don't know how much, but. Yeah, I, I don't think there is one. You know, you don't normally see crosswalks in those areas. But, you know, it's built, so I mean, we kind of don't have much of a choice. And then the lights on one side, that there's, they're still going to put in the flashing lights and all of that, that'll help too, but. Yeah, it was, it was, it's definitely a challenge. Address traffic safety in that, in that kind of condition. And I understand the concerns about the, the speed humps. But I, I do also know that, I think, if you look at bumps, these humps, whatever you guys call them, humps or bumps. You know, yeah, you know, they're, they've been put successfully in areas like IAL Pro City, OnCam Highway and stuff. So I think DOT feels, they have reasonable success metrics with these things as far as slowing down traffic. So the main thing was not necessarily for the vehicular stuff, but it's for pedestrian safety. And I think that's why there's a lot of complaints and ask for this kind of stuff, so. Okay. Thank you, Casey.
Yeah.
Let us know when the, the lights go in.
Okay, sure.
Okay, moving on to approval, approval of board minutes for our September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. Board members, do we have any corrections, comments regarding the minutes? Anyone? Seeing no comments or corrections, any objections to adopting the minutes as written? Any abstentions? Hearing no objections or abstentions, the minutes have been adopted. Moving on to committee reports, education. Steven.
I'll be presenting the Education Committee Chair's Report for Mililani Middle School. And we're going to be talking from, Camille, do you have that up? Yes, you do. Great. Let's come down to the top where it says calendar events under administration, October twenty-second. Right there. Good, thank you. This information is going to be available up in the Google Drive and I'd recommend any viewers to go and access it. This is actually, this calendar of events was just updated today. It's great what the school's doing. As you notice, on the twenty-second, we have Panda Express Night going. It's for Panda Express at the Town Center. There's also a parent night for student safety, twenty-second. Twenty-fourth Hunter and House, et cetera. Great sports activities on the twenty-fifth. And great treat on the twenty-seventh, music department performance, which is going to be super at the Mililani Complex, elevated schools. They do have more field trips coming up on the October twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and the thirty-first. One thing of importance also on November third is the high school registration guidance session, third and fourth. And then they have the fifth is a parent night for the eighth graders, coming back to a field trip on the seventh. And then November ten and eleven is no school and the fifteenth is the tournament. At the bottom of page one is the high interest programs. The hip programs, when I was on the, the board there for the PTSO, I used to go at the beginning of the school year and help hand out the flyers on this to the new parents. And the parents were just amazed that these after-school programs are free. It's all free. It's great. The PTSO actually funds them, funds them. And the teachers are our heroes. They actually donate their time after school to provide dance, sports, robotics, music, yearbooks, computer. They have thirty-one total programs. And then the PTSO for the middle school funds it. So whenever the students need to go anywhere, we set that up when I was a fundraising chair, that it's all paid for. So it's a, it's a great, great resource for the community. Second page, we come down, you know, that is the school year. Twenty-fifth and twenty, two oh two five, two oh two six school year. And also the top, we have that the, the PTSO, Parent Teacher Student Organization, and the school, the SEC does meet, continues to meet on the second Tuesday of the month, Administration Main Conference Room. PTSO at five PM, SEC at six PM. And thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, military civil defense.
No report.
Parks and Recreation?
No report.
Finding permitting zoning.
No report.
Okay, thank you, Stanton. Transportation did not meet this past month. Recognition, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, no report.
All right, thank you. All right, does anybody have any announcements? Okay, seeing none, our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM at the, here at the Mililani Malka Elementary School and via WebEx. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.